Have your attention. We're instructed, and when we speak, especially when instructed to speak directly to the mic, so that we can be picked up by someone after we say behind you. Can you hear us in the back?
No, sir.
No?
No.
The person at the back, part of us in the back, can you hear me at this time?
No, sir.
You can.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I was...
Can you hear? We're waiting for the audio. We want to adjust the... make adjustments to the speaker before they come up, so each of us who speak, that we could just speak more directly to the mic, a little louder, so the audience would have been able to hear us. That been face, we now call this high in class agreement to order. Higher education, you can, if you mind.
He's talking about how thankful we are for getting another opportunity to put this together together. Board, we thank you for having brought us here today. We ask now your blessing on this great introduction in front of the person's family. Pray for this board that we may work together in spirit of the covenant, and you give us bits of knowledge and understanding. We know these paths in which we live, we need you to guide and direct our steps, our steps, and the word. Pray the board as we go forward today, that we would even disagree and not become disapprehensible, that you would set our sights on taking the high road, and we will stay there pleasing in your sight, that's our student body. And I even pray as we gather here this weekend, that you would give protection to the players, and everyone who's proud and to it towards arise here this week, that you would give a proud embrace and arise into this. Ask your best good one to the governor and other executive officials, that they would give, that we would have favor, and that we would move forth in a positive way in Jesus' name, not in prayer. Amen.
Yes.
Dr. Tom here. Mr. Braxton.
Yes.
Attorney Gray.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. Fandell.
Dr. Gaines.
Here.
Reverend Henry.
Here.
Mr. Gager.
Here.
Mr. Lawson.
Sergeant.
Attorney McGee.
Here.
Mr. Small.
President.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
President.
Reverend Droger.
Here.
Dr. Whitfield.
Here. We have a call.
Thank you very much, Mr. Braxton. We have a motion to the board.
So move to the president.
Second, the doctor's agenda. All those considering outside five.
Aye.
Those public comments, are there any public comments to be made at this time representing item on the agenda? Here we now, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of the board office 2016, the chairman and vice chairman. Inasmuch as I have announced before that I will stand for reelection, I would like to turn the gavel over to our vice chair to preside this session. Mr. Braxton.
Okay. All right. Let's move. We have a hand. Yes, we need votes from the board for chair. Mr. Braxton, I move that we nominate Dr. Leon Tomlin as the chair of this board for 2019, for six hundred. Seven second. Okay, then move the second to have a roll call. But no one's all right yet. Mr. Braxton, move that we close the meeting. Seven. Okay, we have second to close. Okay, second, we do a roll call. Yes. Mr. Braxton.
Yes.
Attorney Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Fandell.
Yes.
Dr. Gaines.
Yes.
Reverend Gaff. Mr. Gager. Yes. Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Attorney McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Reverend Droger.
No.
Dr. Whitfield.
Yes.
We have a private call. Congratulations.
Nominations for Vice Chair of our board.
Chair nomination. Chair Lex, I recommend the bill is very phenomenal and dedicated to that. I didn't say this one, you know, I'm telling the truth. And the head role is Vice Chair.
I say, I say. I think we're in front of the group, second, that we elect. Do I have any further nominations? That motion nomination closed?
Closed. Second.
We're in front of the group, second, nomination already taken outside five.
Aye. We have a roll call, vote. Yes. Dr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Attorney Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Fandell.
Yes.
Dr. Gaines.
Yes.
Reverend Gaff.
Yes.
Mr. Gager.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Sergeant.
Attorney McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Reverend Droger.
Yes.
Dr. Whitfield.
Yes.
We have a private call.
Well, thank you so very much, we do graduate, Mr. Braxton.
Thank you very much. Take a minute.
We'll move on to another item on the agenda, some special presentations. I believe that Dr. Brown, you can hear some feedback.
Good morning, board members. Good morning, President. We'll be very, very brief. We wanted to provide you an update on our work with the Board of Regents, as well as a specific update on Dow Chemical. We recall our conversation in the last board meeting. We prepared a PowerPoint, we will not do it, and so we have a handout that you can take and read at your leisure. With me this morning are Dr. Lisa Vosper from the Board of Regents, and Sam Chisong from Dow Chemical. And we're going to be real brief, so you go first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is always a pleasure to be with family at Southern University. I first bring you greetings on behalf of our Commissioner of Higher Education, who is in New Haven, Connecticut, visiting ninety-seven-year-old Vosper. And that is the only reason he is not here with us today. I wanted to spend a few minutes with you, sharing with you what the Board of Regents is doing and has been doing in relation to our work in terms of workforce development. I serve as the Associate Commissioner for Workforce Development of the Louisiana Board of Regents. And one of the things that we are determining and finding is that higher education, and of course, there are, is so significant, and it is the gateway to the middle class and beyond. It absolutely helps us to achieve the American dream, and we have to do that in building a strong workforce, not just for our state, but for individuals to be able to have value for that they're looking at their family. By 2018, sixty percent of the jobs in the United States will require some secondary, and fifty-one percent of those in Louisiana. You know about the Board of Regents, we could skip past all of those slides, but they're there. I just want to draw your attention to the slide that speaks on, let me just write number three. If you turn to page number three, you can hear that. Of page three, it shares with you some of the successes that we have experienced in working with our colleges and universities. But if you continue, I want you to look at slide two. The, there is a shift in higher education in the sense of what we have to do as a higher education enterprise, which is different. It is an expanded mission of our role in higher education, and it's not just to educate students, but our role is to educate students who can compete. And as the Commissioner says, they can compete with other students from Texas or Taiwan, but they are competitive nonetheless, and our institutions have to be that need. We have been working very strategically over the last several years to move the workforce education and training component of our broader mission to the forefront, and looking at work that we've done with the vice, how the work of the institutions have been extremely involved in that work. The integration of workforce metrics as a part of our formula, we have had numerous of the Southern university system to be a part of that discussion, to increase collaboration with business and industry, we've been doing that for years. And then looking at opportunity for institutions to engage, not just in our workforce work, but also in opportunities for innovation, to look at not just the workforce for today, but for the innovation for tomorrow. But with success comes challenge, and as you know, probably all too well, we have faced significant consecutive years of budget cuts that have in some ways stifled our ability, but in other ways have both focused us and have permitted us to do more with less, and to demonstrate the value of higher education. Our workforce innovation work that we have been doing has been extremely impressive. One of the things that the Board of Regents should do is to look at its own goals and missions in our master plan, and if you will look on page six, the former goals of the master plan are listed there, and they are before you, I won't go through all of them. But moving forward, one of the things that we will be doing to expand our mission is to look more strategically, thank you to, to look more strategically, and enhancing campus efforts to address workforce development, aligning curriculum to do the same, removing unproductive and outdated programs, adding programs that meet the needs of our community, and we're continuing to work with local communities, workforce boards, et cetera. But when I talk about workforce development, I want to be clear at what we're talking about. It's not just the greasy, the grease under the fingernails, but it is the innovation that takes place in labs. It is everything from our skills training on one end at Southern University in Shreveport, all the way to the research and development that takes place on the other end on our Baton Rouge campus and PhD programs across the state. So I've provided for you a definition that I believe encompasses the entire spectrum, from skills training and certificate all the way through to commercialization. Regents has been working on several initiatives to bring that together, I won't get into all of those, but representatives from the system have been extremely involved and have added quite a bit of value in the work that we're doing. In particular, I'd like to point your attention to page eight, we are looking at a new plan for higher education within the state of Louisiana called Elevate Louisiana, Educate and Innovate, and it will deal with our workforce education component, as well as innovation and research. Higher education as we know it, H-I-G-H-E-R, also has to be higher education, A-I-R-E-R, because when we complete, when we graduate students, we have to be sure that the students can graduate, not only can leave our campuses, but also get employed and progress on the job. We have been doing quite a bit of work with all of the gubernatorial candidates up to this point, we're looking very far into working with our new governor-elect, and we stand excited to continue our partnership with Southern University, and to continue your engagement in all of our efforts. I am really encouraged by three things, in particular, as it relates to my institution. Number one, our leadership. I have, it has been such a pleasure in this very short time to work with Dr. Belton, who is on the front line for Southern University, in all of our meetings, in all of our negotiations, whether we're talking about programs, or whether we're talking about the formula, Dr. Belton has been engaged, whether it's dealing with matters related to workforce or mission, or whether it's dealing to matters related to money. He has no problem standing up for the Southern University. I am also extremely proud of partners at Southern University in Shreveport that are really beginning to be on the very front line of the work that is happening in workforce development. In particular, Janice Snead in Shreveport has been invited to join the Workforce Investment Council, whose chair is present today, Charles Manier is in the audience, has been invited to join the Subcommittee on Industry-Based Certification, and has been appointed to her local workforce development board. We're excited about the work that is going, that is going on in Southern, at Southern University in Shreveport. And finally, I'm extremely excited about here the Provost, even though he's from that school that begins with an A, we are excited to work with him. We are extremely positive about the partnerships that are going to be forged between not just the Board of Regents and Southern University Baton Rouge, but the strengthening of the work that Southern is doing in the workforce space throughout the state of Louisiana. So I'm glad to be here again on behalf of Commissioner Rallo. Thank you for permitting us to share with you what we're doing, and to commend you on your very excellent work.
We're not going to delay, we're going to go ahead and bring up Stacy Chisong, but if you would look on page ten, and I can certainly come back at another time and share with you our engagements that will be critical, looking across the system as the Board of Regents transitions with our funding formulas. President Belton knows it's working well with the return on education project, much of the formula, which will become performance and outcome based, as, as McClintock knows as well, also will be including a component where we're running numbers on a return, your bu, a budget component that is based on the graduates of your institution working in the state and contributing to the tax base. So when you look at the formula going forward, we will actually be looking at how our graduates perform, and what areas of work they perform. So that will mean that we'll have to look at our majors across all of the campuses, as well as our low performing and underperforming majors. It also means we're going to have to do a refresh on our strong academic majors, some, and I see my faculty sitting right behind me, some majors we will have to phase out, and some we will have to strengthen. One that we've been paying close attention to over the last month is the College of Engineering, and we are pleased that we have several tangible things that we've agreed to with Dow that the board should be proud of. Stacy.
Good morning. This must be a very hard-working board, because I don't know any other board that meets at nine o'clock on Friday after Thanksgiving. Despite of Mr. Braxton being on the board, I understand how to work. Mr. Braxton is a personal friend of my dad's, and he's been around my family for a long time, so thank you for having me this morning. Dr. Belton was very gracious hosting Dow out to the campus a few weeks ago, and I've been back a couple times to meet with Dean Habib from the College of Engineering, and I am not from higher education, so you'll notice I had three slides compared to their forty slides, so I saved you. But if you don't know, I know Tony is very familiar with Dow, but Dow is a global leader in the chemical industry. We are the largest chemical company in the state of Louisiana with six thousand employees. We have five sites across the state, our largest being right there in Platteville, Louisiana. So currently, we have forty employees from Southern, all over, in very strategic locations. I have one of you along with me today, Stephane Pierre, Stephane, and Stephane, yes. Stephane is a global leader for Dow, who just happened to tie down, and he lives in Louisiana, so we're very fortunate, but he leads reliability and maintenance for one of our EO businesses. But Stephane has graciously too agreed to be the focal point for Dow and Southern, because it was time to reengage, and you will notice we have, we didn't want to, we have a strong partnership with Southern for many years. We have sponsored lab space, we've hired employees, we've sponsored summer programs, but with over a billion-dollar investment in the state of Louisiana, and the hiring that Dow is currently doing, and will have to continue to do over the next few years, we have to fully engage with Southern and our other university partners. We did not want to come in and list twelve things that were not sustainable. The Department of Engineering came with twelve things, and I loved that. Dean Habib came with twelve things. We came with six. We got to five strong action items that you will see right here on page twelve, all the way from putting Stephane as a, in an advisory capacity for the dean of engineering with his technical expertise, yes. We believe in impacting people, but engaging our employees to do that. We want to sponsor your programs to recruit diversity in the local communities. So you're doing a great job, Southern's doing a great job of bringing young people in from high school, middle school, and to get them engaged early, so that they know the pathway after they graduate high school. We want to support and sponsor that, not only with dollars, but also our volunteers. The third thing is, we have commitment and buy-in to support two summer interns from Southern, so we will be doing that. I can't promise that they'll be right there in Platteville, but what an opportunity for your students to intern at our Dow Houston Center, or Midland, Michigan, or Freeport, Texas, or Philadelphia, so we're looking forward to that. We want to recruit out of your mechanical engineering, but also your electrical. And then, let's see. Yeah, okay. Another opportunity that we've heard from several of you is, how do we take advantage of the lab space in process technology? So there, there's two pieces to work in at Dow, there's an engineer, and there's an operator, and the operators are the backbone of our plants. They operate the machinery, and it is critical that our engineers know how to work with them, how to communicate, because they, the operators operate the equipment, but the engineers design the equipment, so you can imagine how critical that is. We've invested millions of dollars in a process technology lab on Hoover Road, five miles from your campus. So the fourth piece is to get Department of Engineering engaged with process technology at the Baton Rouge Community College, and see how we can partner and build a stronger curriculum for both. And so we're in the process of doing that. And then the fifth one is, Dow, Lisa talked well about the academic pieces of this, and learning in a classroom, and your Provost has been wonderful to work with over the last five weeks of getting that straight, but if they don't have a real-world classroom, if we don't bring them to Dow and have them design and research in that facility, then we've lost relevancy. And so we have also committed, we call it a capstone project, so we've also committed funds and time for your students at Southern to do a capstone project at Dow. So we feel a little small with Dr. Belton about those five action items, we think they're sustainable, we think there could be more to come, but I think that's a good place to start, and so I am also encouraged and excited about the partnership continuing. Dow's been there for sixty years, been a great partner, and we're looking for another board to run another forty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you put a chip? She just gave up.
You? You took it off.
Thank you, board, thank you, board members, and the signed agreement we hope will probably be before you as an information item at the January meeting. Are there any questions? Yeah, my, I asked this year to stand up for the chair. Attorney brother mine, but he also is leading the academic community, and I spoke, he would do well by Southern, in terms of making sure that out of grad, this major figures standings, and I appreciate you here for stepping up to that, to the plate, helping Southern here.
That's all.
And I'll meet you as well. Something to be said about a couple individuals who decided to join us on an earlier Friday or a day after you started. And so I want to particularly express my appreciation to you, Stacy and Lisa, no charge with this, as well, to make this happen available this morning. As Lisa pointed out, you know, we've engaged in a number of discussions ever so recently, with the intent of providing a pathway for our application in the state of Louisiana going forward. One of the things that were most prevalent in those discussions was the need for institutions to really invest in those centers of excellence. It appears that the focus is no longer on just the number of graduates, but the number of graduates in certain, um, field. And therein, it requires all of us to take another look at our academic performance as Dr. Brown, the...
Southern University Shreveport. And finally, I'm extremely excited about hearing the Provost, even though he's from that school that begins with an A. We are excited to work with him. We are extremely positive about the partnerships that are going to be forged between not just the Board of Regents and Southern University Baton Rouge, but the strengthening of the work that Southern is doing in the workforce space throughout the state of Louisiana. So I'm glad to be here again on behalf of Commissioner Rallo. Thank you for permitting us to share with you what we're doing and to commend you on your very excellent work.
We're not going to delay. We're going to go ahead and bring up Stacy Chazong. But if you would look on page 10, and I can certainly come back at another time and share with you our engagements that will be critical looking across the system as the Board of Regents transitions with our funding formulas. President Beltton knows it's working well with the return on education project. Much of the formula, which will become performance and outcome based, as McClintock knows as well, also will be including a component where we're running numbers on a return, a budget component that is based on the graduates of your institution working in the state and contributing to the tax base. So when you look at the formula going forward, we will actually be looking at how our graduates perform and what areas of work they perform. So that will mean that we'll have to look at our majors across all of the campuses, as well as our low performing and underperforming majors. It also means we're going to have to do a refresh on our strong academic majors. Some, and I see my faculty sitting right behind me, some majors we will have to phase out, and some we will have to strengthen. One that we've been paying close attention to over the last month is the College of Engineering. And we are pleased that we have several tangible things that we've agreed to with Dow that the Board should be proud of. Stacy?
Good morning. This must be a very hardworking board because I don't know any other board that meets at nine o'clock on Friday after Thanksgiving. Despite of Mr. Braxton being on the board, I understand how to work. Mr. Braxton is a personal friend of my dad's and has been around my family for a long time. So thank you for having me this morning. Dr. Belton was very gracious hosting Dow out to the campus a few weeks ago. And I've been back a couple of times to meet with Dean Habib from the College of Engineering. And I am not from higher education, so you'll notice I had three slides compared to their 40 slides. So I saved you. But if you don't know, I know Tony is very familiar with Dow, but Dow is a global leader in the chemical industry. We are the largest chemical company in the state of Louisiana with 6,000 employees. We have five sites across the state. Our largest being right there in Flack in Louisiana. So currently, we have 40 employees from Southern all over in very strategic locations. I have one of you along with me today, Stephane Pierre. Stephane? And Stephane, yes. Stephane is a global leader for Dow, who just happened to tie you down, and he lives in Louisiana. So we're very fortunate. But he leads reliability and maintenance for one of our EO businesses. But Stephane has graciously too agreed to be the focal point for Dow and Southern because it was time to reengage. And you will notice, we have, we didn't want to, we have a strong partnership with Southern for many years. We have sponsored lab space. We've hired employees. We've sponsored summer programs. But with over a billion dollar investment in the state of Louisiana, and the hiring that Dow is currently doing and will have to continue to do over the next few years, we have to fully engage with Southern and our other university partners. We did not want to come in and list 12 things that were not sustainable. The Department of Engineering came with 12 things, and I loved that. Dean Habib came with 12 things. We came with six. We got to five strong action items that you will see right here on page 12, all the way from putting Stephane as an advisory capacity for the dean of engineering with his technical expertise. Yes. We believe in impacting people by engaging our employees to do that. We want to sponsor your programs to recruit diversity in the local communities. So you're doing a great job. Southern's doing a great job of bringing young people in from high school, middle school, and to get them engaged early so that they know the pathway after they graduate high school. We want to support and sponsor that, not only with dollars, but also our volunteers. The third thing is, we have commitment and buy-in to support two summer interns from Southern. So we will be doing that. I can't promise that they'll be right there in Flack, but what an opportunity for your students to intern at our Dow Houston Center, or Midland, Michigan, or Freeport, Texas, or Philadelphia. So we're looking forward to that. We want to recruit out of your mechanical engineering, but also your electrical. And then, let's see. Yeah, okay. Another opportunity that we've heard from several of you is, how do we take advantage of the lab space in process technology? So there, there's two pieces to work in at Dow. There's an engineer, and there's an operator. And the operators are the backbone of our clients. They operate the machinery. And it is critical that our engineers know how to work with them, how to communicate. Because they, the operators operate the equipment, but the engineers design the equipment. So you can imagine how critical that is. We've invested millions of dollars in a process technology lab on Hoover Road, five miles from your campus. So the fourth piece is to get Department of Engineering engaged with process technology at the Baton Rouge Community College and see how we can partner and build a stronger curriculum for both. And so we're in the process of doing that. And then the fifth one is Dow, Lisa talked well about the academic pieces of this and learning in a classroom. And your Provost has been wonderful to work with over the last five weeks of getting that straight. But if they don't have a real world classroom, if we don't bring them to Dow and have them design and research in that facility, then we've lost relevancy. And so we have also committed, and we call that a capstone project. So we've also committed funds and time for your students at Southern to do a capstone project at Dow. So we feel a little small with Dr. Belton about those five action items. We think they're sustainable. We think there could be more to come, but I think that's a good place to start. And so I am also encouraged and excited about the partnership continuing. Dow's been there for 60 years. Been a great partner. And we're looking for another board to another 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you put a chip? She just gave up.
You took it off.
Thank you, Board members. And the signed agreement we hope will probably be before you as an information item at the January meeting.
Yeah, my last is here to stand up for you. Turning to Brother Martin, but he also is leading the academic community. And I spoke, he would do well by Southern in terms of making sure that our graduates meet your rigorous standards. And I appreciate Pierre for stepping up to that, to the plate, helping Southern.
And I'll meet you as well. Something to be said about a couple individuals who decided to join us on an earlier Friday or a day after they started. And so I want to particularly express my appreciation to you, Stacy and Lisa, no charge with this as well to make this happen available this morning. As Lisa pointed out, you know, we've engaged in a number of discussions ever so recently with the intent of providing a pathway for our application in the state of Louisiana going forward. One of the things that were most prevalent in those discussions was the need for institutions to really invest in those Centers of Excellence. It appears that the focus is no longer on just the number of graduates, but the number of graduates in certain marketable fields. And therein, it requires all of us to take another look at our academic requirements as Dr. Brown made mention, to broaden our eyes, invest, and make strategic decisions about, you know, how we position the university such as we can take advantage of the performance-based model that is poised to be evident. The degree to which we can establish these Centers of Excellence relies very heavily on our relationship with business. So the opportunity to, again, reaffirm our relationship with Dow. I have them assert that substantial partners of course provide us type of input and help to shape our graduates. This is very important. So again, I just want to express my appreciation for your willingness to come before us this morning. It's been a joy working with you today. And I look forward to doing that in the future.
We also have President this morning, Mr. Ron Braxton of Southern Center. He asked a couple of brief updates on the status of our legislative position going forward to the special session next week.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, congratulations on the reelection. I'm sorry, I was late, I missed it. But just to be very brief, I've been aware of the government. And he'll take over January 11. There's been a lot of conversations about having two special sessions in the beginning of the year. I think that now in the side room, there's going to be one special session. The reason for that is that Governor Jindal has just issued $500 million in cuts, thereabout. And the governor, the governor-elect, has indicated that he's just going to focus on how we fix the budget going forward. In terms of the $500 million budget cuts, the one thing that is up, two things that I've most concerned about, one is that we did not sustain any cuts, which is good. But in order to maintain that, there is a vote out to access the legislative or grant a day fund. And in order to do that, two thirds of the legislature has to agree to approve that. It's a $28 million request. Those ballots went out last Friday. We have until the 18th until we get them all in. So what we'll be doing between now and then is making sure that, making sure that all of the ballots are in by the time of the session. So probably starting Monday going forward, we'll work with the systems to make sure that we don't sustain any cuts. But that's really good. You know, all I have right now is very few. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's the date of the regular session?
Oh, my goodness. Regular session will start mid-March. I don't know the exact date, but I'll make sure someone knows. The special session, as the governor-elect can, sometime in February. My guess, it'll probably take up the bulk of February. They'll then take a couple of weeks off and then come back for the regular session. So I think also the thing I've been thinking about is, what our role might be in this special session. We've got a big issue going forward with how high rate we'd finance. And certainly, whatever they give us in a special session in terms of how the budget would be structured will have a great impact on Southern University. So that's something that we ought to be paying attention to. We will be paying attention to.
Well, as you know, our next, our board meeting in January will occur prior to the governor's in office, but prior to the special session. So perhaps at that meeting, we might be in position to give us even further opinion at that time.
That would, so when you got this chance.
Any questions, any important questions?
President, this session, all, everything is wide open game. You can bring any bill. Doesn't have to be.
In a regular session, yes. You can't bring specific bills, but everything else should be open. It's wide open.
So this Grad Act is that I think the statements we visit within open up that Southern can collaborate with you and try to do some deal out there.
Absolutely. The Grad Act is definitely going to be on the table. It's up for renewal. I don't think that we would be alone and think of the other systems aren't necessarily thrilled about the Grad Act and the impact that it's had. But in addition to that, there is a move amongst systems, well, a move amongst the Regents. And based on that, there was a resolution passed that's coming up with a new finance funding formula. All of that is going to be played, you know, it's going to roll into the discussion in Grad Act. So Southern should be paying close attention to that. But yes, I answered your question. There's opportunity for us to. Absolutely.
Mr. Lawson?
And it's followed with a Grad Act. Tell us one question I had too. What about the ability to adjust tuition? Is there anything on the table to afford the systems an opportunity to do that without the approval of the legislature?
That is an annual conversation. There is no new conversation about, you know, the tuition authority from the legislature. It's been very difficult to sustain. I mean, we did that pass in that, you know, previous session. I don't expect that to be an independent conversation. But as a relation to Grad Act, I think it will be part of the conversation because of the Grad Act, the ability to raise tuition that's directly tied to it, such as the fairly.
Dr. Lawson, did you have comments?
Yes, I have.
Yes, sir. What I'd like to share with you is, Ron is exactly right. But what you may not be aware of is that as a result of this past legislative session, there was a resolution, and there has been a study committee that has been working for the last several months to look at the Grad Act. I can tell you that that report will be going before our board for approval. The recommendation now has six basic recommendations. One of them is not to renew contracts within the Grad Act going forward, but to utilize the metrics that are relevant from the Grad Act to be included in our new formula and outcomes-based funding model going forward. They have also made a recommendation that is desired to go with both Regents, that the tuition authority that you're speaking of, the authority, also be included in the recommendation. There are some pieces that are tied to the law that if we repeal, or if the legislature votes to repeal Grad Act, it would also go away. They gave some authorities to the institutions and to the systems. So the recommendations in the report maintain all of the things that were good, if you will, through Grad Act, and the things that were the most challenging and unintended consequences. There's a recommendation that we revisit those and not perhaps renew those. So that report is going to be going before Regents in the January board meeting at Regents. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you sit on that commitment here.
Actually, Mr. Smith is sitting on it. I said it's all of the committees you have.
Okay, so it is coming up.
Well, just to be clear, I was aware of that. And then some meetings, I was trying to avoid coming up here. I was trying to get a little bit more. What she says is.
I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
Ron has read it in various quarters. It's a gauge in this process. Again, it's lack of knowledge in its service to Southern University.
That's my question. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Moving forward to item seven on the agenda, action items A through J. What is your question?
Chairman? I move a pool of items, A through E.
E? No, I'm sorry. E.
A through E.
I was suddenly reminded of my guy from Shreveport. Remember?
I'm sorry. In fact, I was going to say you said A through, and I'm looking on the next page.
My motion, my original motion to the chairman, one through, as you have, seven, A through J. What would it pass as opposed to be a revolution project?
I second it.
I'm moving second. To the opposition, all those in favor and on side of eye? So have it. So now at item J, seven J, revolution, president?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Willie Chambers family. Mrs. Chambers, aunt of Southern University Board of Supervisors Chairman, Dr. Leon Powers, the captain, passed away on November 5, 2015. The Esther Fandell family. Mrs. Fandell, mother of Southern University Board of Supervisors member, Mr. Raymond Fandell, passed away on November 8, 2015. The Reverend Joseph Rowley Jr. family. Reverend Rowley, father of his migrant Rowley Banks, board relations coordinator, passed away on November 9. The Samuel Sims family. Mr. Sims, a building contractor who was instrumental in building many buildings throughout the Southern University system. The husband of Rosemary Sims, a cashier in the Versus office, the SU PR campus, passed away on November 10, 2015. The Lisa Marshall family. Mrs. Marshall, former member and chair of the Southern University Board of Supervisors, passed away on November 11, 2015. The George Stevens family. Mrs. Stevens, retired assistant to the chancellor of the SU PR campus and professor of foreign languages, passed away on November 16, 2015. The Arthur Tosin family. Dr. Tosin, retired professor of history, the son of the acclaimed Rowley College debater, Mr. Melvin Tosin, of the SU PR campus, passed away on November 20, 2015. And lastly, the Shirley Grady family. Mrs. Grady, a 1955 graduate of Southern University Baton Rouge, passed away on November 23, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. President. That motion.
I'd like to add a resolution. Mr. President, I can, a resolution commending Dow to the board, bearing up with our engineering schools and facilitating a relationship with the school to help out his chartering of the president. So my last step for the adoption.
This was awesome. Do we need to a motion about?
We're going to adopt. One, I also have one to thank Senator to motion commending the governor and all statewide officials on their election or reelection to their posts.
Thank you. The initial resolutions. If not, we have a motion to. Move that they all get. Southern. The popular movement, all those in favor and on side of eye? I have a vote. So have. When we go to action item, I mean to action item eight, information items, A, update on local charter authorization. Does he got steel? Yes.
Good morning. Let me begin by thanking the board, the chair, the committee that was formed to take on this project some time ago. I gave a rather extensive presentation on our attempt to expand our elementary and secondary education program from beyond Baton Rouge to our Shreveport and Arden-Woollenes campuses. As we just heard, it's a difficult time in Louisiana attempting to fund higher education in all of education. So this effort to expand our elementary and secondary education program, expand our laboratory program, has really taken fire. We've made a lot of progress over the last several months. When we began this endeavor with the presentation that was made back in February, the board, the committee that the board chair put together has worked very hard, put together a great application. We met with the Department of Education on several occasions. We ultimately met with Superintendent John White. He had some questions for us. We offered to him that if approved as a local charter authorizer, that would allow us to create these schools throughout the state of Louisiana, in Shreveport, in New Orleans, and in Baton Rouge, that what we would in turn do is offer, in addition to that, a memorandum of understanding to work more closely with the department. And I think we made a lot of headway. In response to that offer, to work closely with the department, I'm pleased to report to you that the superintendent of education has agreed to recommend to the best board that the Southern University system become a local charter authorizer, which will allow it to create these schools. The great thing about that is that once the schools are up and running, it will create and have with a day funding mechanism that will generate about $20 million a year. And of course, over the course of five years, once they're up and running, will generate about $100 million to support these particular schools. There is no other HBCU in the country doing what we're about to do if we are approved at the best board meeting on Tuesday. There's certainly no other system. We will be certainly the first in the state to do this. This will be an incredible opportunity. And frankly, it will be something bold and innovative, the sort of things that we've heard about this morning that the legislature would want to hear about. And frankly, that I think folks at the Board of Regents would be pleased to see that we're taking those sorts of bold steps. So again, I'd like to thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve on this committee and work to move things forward. Congratulations to all of you. And I look forward to a favorable vote at the committee meeting on Tuesday with the board, with the best board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to item B, JDMBA, the program update, Mr. Pierre.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, President, members of the board. Each of you should have this little draft of our JDMBA flyer that I've been working with being in the college of business moving forward to implement this program. We've met with about 25 students from the Law Center, and we're going to begin to do activities promoting the program beginning in New Orleans in January. So this is one of the initiatives that we wanted to update the board on related to where we're going and trying to make Southern University Law Center and Southern University College of Business or the university system a more innovative place in higher education. And Dr. Andrews wasn't able to be here today, but he wanted to have me tell us to the board, the chairman of the board, and any ideas. And please tell us to as many folks as you can who are marketing and promoting this particular program beginning fall 2016.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Any questions? Move to item C, President. Please, for that, don't.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here to submit a report. And in that report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the events that occurred, particularly on the Baton Rouge campus this week. One of which was the convening of a number of institutions in such a way as to highlight the recent award of $13.1 million to the Department of Rehabilitation and Disability Services under the leadership of Dr. Condit. Southern University was one of, I believe, five institutions nationally that was awarded this grant. They are the physical agent and will be working on with George Washington University, the University of Wisconsin, and the University of Michigan to facilitate opportunities and technical assistance that would drive more opportunities to individuals with disabilities. And I was just really impressed. Excuse me. I was really impressed with the number of engagement in the, in the work that was before it, probably after the, of their effort. Secondly, we have the, or I have the opportunity of engaging with the colleges, the Department of Social Services, if you will, and where they provided for students an opportunity to make presentations speaking to their individual research. And it was really an impressive display of students, you know, really sharing their thoughts, their innovation, their research. And it gave me some, it just kind of reaffirmed to me the great work that our faculty engaged in and really shaped and molded students on the Baton Rouge campus,
on the Baton Rouge campus, but in particular, on all of our campuses. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to, as well, just express my appreciation to all of our faculty and staff and what they're doing, the bold initiatives of the university and in the college system. I want to also just kind of give you an update on the ongoing searches that we launched. As you know, we have two active searches. Our next week, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we will be publicizing the search committee that would bring focus to this election of a new chancellor for the agriculture and extension center. But, but as you know, we have launched a search for the, to appoint a new chancellor for the Shreveport campus. The deadline for this federal applications is September twenty-four, next week. We have received a number of applications today, and we would anticipate the search committee actually beginning to review those applications. I think we potentially have a schedule where we anticipate them coming together in early January, and of course, we would be asking this board to give consideration to those candidates, hopefully in the early spring. That's what we want, in the early spring. The search for the, for the law center is ongoing as well. We have established a deadline of January fifteenth to receive the applications for those who are actively considering to become the next chancellor of the law center. We also anticipate the early spring, this board engaging with those candidates, such as to realize the next chancellor for that. Our overall anticipation is that on July one of twenty sixteen, that we will now appoint chancellors for all of the three camps, Shreveport, Law Center, and the Agribusiness Center.
Got questions?
Yes.
Why are you doing all that search? What about the athletic? Are we doing, going on, going search of athletic?
Yeah, well, it would be mine in the early spring. I'm actually going to give some thought to that. I'm actively giving some thought to that at this, at this moment. Probably know later than ever offering, having, engaging with this board to give consideration.
Sorry, Siri didn't get that.
Mr. Chair. I'm concerned about all of these bases and things that were flipped, and I feel we shouldn't be in the situation we're in now, that we, we have too many people in the early positions, and we've got to be more proactive. But one thing that I heard that I'm disturbed about, and relates to the search committee board, first of all, I think the search committee needs to be in charge of the search. And if I'm wrong, I wish somebody would straighten me out today. I think it needs to be, my understanding is that the search committee itself, working with administration, on all of ones that I've been on since I've been on the board, independently of administration, looked at the timeline, that kind of thing. I guess I'm frustrated with Shreveport search. We've been spending a little miss six, seven months, and this morning said, well, we'll get something in the middle of spring. But I think we've been on this long enough, and I don't like that. And let me tell you another thing I'm looking at, is that we pull around this thing, the whole semester, we come here with a new person, we don't have no real bones about it. But I feel, I do think, Mr. President, we need to put a little more breadth into these things, because, and as it relates to a lot of, I just look at some of the board, when you talk about the AD, why do we have to wait till March? I think that, and I would that you consider, I say what others are thinking, wants to announce, and then I think you need to move on, and I think that, oh, won't you really look at this, not tell me to do it tomorrow. But I think the system is, we feel like we need to move on. We have too many people in active positions in this system, and we need to move forward and get people a partner, and who will be more accountable. So, that's all I was saying to you.
So, let me speak to the search in Shreveport, because the administration actually met with the search committee, solicited from the members of the search committee what be, what they felt to be attributes that would end this out through the selection of the new chancellor. And we took those suggestions into consideration for the major job announcements. One of those suggestions was, was such that we don't accelerate the process that would maybe eliminate individuals who are given consideration to that. And with the holidays that was upon us, with the schedule of the board, we kind of sensitive as to when we would begin that process, such that it would be included in the job fashion. And that's why we pushed it back to December. I had originally thought that we could be this time, this fall, but in hindsight, I think it may have been a rushed process. But I am rather optimistic that, again, even with the schedule of this board, that we would have a candidate to you by January, November, at such time as we will likely make an appointment in July. Chair, would you help me?
And this, because I talked to some votes, some members of this committee in Shreveport, back on Facebook, I talked to three or four members of the committee, I need to confirm the votes. And that's why I asked the doctor player, Chair, when they helped me, I want them, when I'm committed, I think, is it the duty of all the committee to sit down and decide, you know, we look at what the requirement is going to be, the committee, the committee looks at a time, and know, and everything has progressed, but in the past, my understanding was, the committee itself to make sure that this was not being driven by administration, the committee itself was somewhat independent. And then even when those recommendations came in, they didn't come in, and they went through the board, straight to the committee, and even administration didn't know about these until the recommendation was made to, and what I'm concerned with is too much involvement from administration, and it's not personal, I'm just trying to get some, know how we are going.
The issue that, the issue that I'm aware of, I'm sorry, the issue that I'm aware of, whereby the president points the committee on the chart from the board, has the administration responsible for the candidate that was participating, providing staff support, helped out in the process. One of the things that has always played havoc with us is timeframe. On the academic side, we look at the semesters system, and we keep looking at the possibility of when people would be eligible on the academic side to apply for a job, and when you could expect to fill that post. I think the first goal was if we get someone by the end of December, because starting in January, that was old alchemy, but that has rarely happened. And because we have so many searches going on, and so many things going on at the same time, that is probably part of what got the calendar as it was. Now, there was never an instance in which the administration, which had the responsibility of staffing, mobilizing, providing assistance, would be uninvolved. But neither was intended to negate the input of chairs, I mean, of the committee itself. So, what you hope for is some congruency between the presidency and that committee, that could bring about the earliest possible yield of candidates, if you can say that is good, because for not every person to take advantage of it, and they're working in another institution, for example, most of the people who are going to apply are working in some institution, whether it's this institution or another, and oftentimes their obligations, you know, give, put them in conflict with this timeframe. So, I thought because of the holiday situation we're in, and because there's a number of searches going on, we probably could, certainly, we got the holidays behind us. So, I thought, he said, when you say here in the spring, I didn't want to use that same term, because like the president suggested, I thought that they could have recommendations to this board. Now, it has never been the case, that I recall, that recommendations came from the committee bypass administration, because actually what they were doing, the administration's in charge of the process. So, it went through, because it is the president who is making the recommendations in this instance, to the board, not committees making recommendations to this person, and this person is making recommendations to the board.
Well, I prefer that that's not what I'm saying, but my point is here, and I hear the thing you're saying, and I have no problem with the process, but I've been only four or sixteen years, and I have served on a number of committees, with chancellor, everything else. And the only thing I'm saying, if we're going to ask people to volunteer and serve on committees, we're going to have to respect them and put them in positions, because their names are going to be our thing. And I was never saying, I know everything has to come after president, and I know I'm not great. I knew in the past, when we had these committees, the committee's work, we moved the information up the ladder, and then it went on, but still, well, we'll talk about it. The timeline was really a problem, I guess, because I'm sure, I said to him, when the president I talked earlier, I knew we weren't going to get anybody back this summer. I mean, and I understand that, because you need to do that, because up until then, we wouldn't get anybody in until July first. But the one thing I was still holding for, as quickly as we could name somebody, have this person lined up to work, and we have more time for transition, because, you know, we got raped in Shreveport when he became president down there, that's the bottom line. And you remember, I asked at the meeting, that I ruled that we would not rape Shreveport, that's eventually what happened. And we put a whole lot on this to get our chancellor, you know, to come back in and hold the ship together when the ship has been plundered. So, that's why I would see us move this, ask you to.
Well, let me say that.
And you know, that's one of that, I prefer you not to, I really prefer you not to, on that.
At least eat this up if you do that. Eat this up.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lawson.
Remembrance on point, when it comes to the, we have a lot going on, and I've been on the board a few years as well. I don't ever recall this board having so much going on at any particular time, and so many serious positions. With that being said, I would like to see something probably living more concrete, that's going to tie into dates, times, what you just articulated, to make sure that we are moving in a satisfactory manner, and that we're meeting our timelines and goals, because if we're not careful, because you have so many individuals involved, things of that nature, we may be talking about this past June, July, if we're not careful. And I know you said it's not possible, but it's probable if we're not careful. So, if you would, next week, or whenever, next several days, get us something showing a timeline, but not just the Shreveport search, but also the law center, the ag center, and how we're going to accomplish things, and I think we'll be at least a little bit more tolerant and confident.
And also, I think.
Very happy.
Thank you very much. Now, we go to item D, campus report on chancellors, Mr. President.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, I actually have a problem with.
Okay. Dr. Paul.
I have one question to add, one item, and that is, as a result of one member to neglect me that requested that we took into the possibility of doing what John Payer reported on a few, a few weeks ago regarding the MDA, JD collaboration at SUPR, we are now in the process of also having a collaboration between the MSW program, which is the social work on my campus, and JD. I think that that discussion has gone so far out that we expect to come to the board, I think in January, no later than February, we're going to approve one of that. So, appreciate the suggestion.
Did you, did you?
No. I'm through. I can leave, I'll go.
You're expecting me to say.
This chair, my staff has been very gracious and very beautiful in presenting before forty. He was listed, very good job, they got two things in there, though, that I think they're especially proud of, that I'm just psyched about, and that is, of course, the tenure. It's a stipulation agreement that we contemplated, which is our state university Shreveport, that deals with our allied health programs. It allows our students an extra option to complete their bachelor of science degrees in community, bachelor of science in community health, in Shreveport, without having to leave. That was no being accomplishment on their part. And this revolves around our respiratory therapy program, radiologic and health program, surgical technology program, health information, dental hygiene, and medical laboratory systems. Secondly, and lastly, we have one of our students we're very proud of, a young lady by the name of Jaclyn Staker, who has presented a research program, a research paper, actually, on NCI, no made accomplishment for a two-year student, that is, at a community college. And she went out and she presented a final paper out there last week. Under the title of Dr. Joseph Arban, one of our distinguished professors of biomedical sciences at Sussin, who himself has just returned from presenting a research program in fellowship, China. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Dr. Brown.
Good morning. You have received the Ag Center's report, I think it's very extensive, I appreciate it, what the faculty and staff continue to do to the public citizens of Louisiana, is damn precisely.
Thank you.
Good morning. You received a report from Southern University Law Center.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Alfred Brown, the executive director of the Southern University Foundation, I would act as a gentleman, just that there was a very brief overview of the BIC Classic activities.
Mr. Chairman.
I wanted to, I was asked to come up and give you guys an update on what's going on with BIC Classic. Happy to report on some ticket numbers. We're over last year's total attendance number by roughly about six thousand. So, we anticipate having roughly about sixty-two thousand people in the dorms. So, that's a really good testament to the hard work that both Bramley and Southern have done to continue to make this event a special event for all who attend. Tomorrow, we are going to, everybody knows the game starts at four p.m. It's no longer a one p.m. start, we're going to have our fan fest that starts at twelve thirty, and that's going to take place at Championships Way. And that's going to go from twelve thirty to three thirty. So, we're really excited about that. So we're really excited about that, to get our young people out, to get them to engage and come to the game like they used to a long time ago. So the game is going to start at four P M, and we're asking all of the board members to come to round level A, the entrance on the Poitry Street side, at about three o'clock for the presentation that we have pregame. So we ask all of you guys to be there for that. And of course, tonight, we have the True Blue Gala that the foundation is hosting, that's going to start at eight thirty P M sharp. And before that, we have our corporate reception and the Battle of the Bands, that's going to commence at six P M at the Supremo.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ray, I just want to take a, thank you also. This past year was a proof of that. It pretty well, it's really impossible for us to recommend the individuals who are part of our national signing day that occurred this past year. And in an effort to increase enrollment throughout our system, and not only our system, but also for Bramley also tomorrow, so that's also a part of the pregame activities that I do encourage board members to adhere to, to include a better enrollment and be recognized for the game.
Can you give me a time again on the?
Gala starts at eight thirty, eight thirty. And it's going to take place in Empire Ballroom on this level. The game three P M, three P M would have ground level entrance A, gate A on Poitry. Any other questions?
What about the Battle of the Bands? What time is that?
Battle of the Bands starting, the corporate reception starts at six P M, and the Battle of the Bands from start at six thirty.
Any other questions?
Chairman, one more, one more. I'm going to start, because I think you see me, I should have mentioned earlier that the governor-elect called after his election, called me to indicate that he's coming to the Supremo event tomorrow at eight thirty, and I would like the legislature to be there to help welcome him. As we know, this is not his first review of Supremo. He's been a friend of Supremo. He was actually instrumental in finding back the general's request to want to march Supremo in two thousand and eleven. And he's been on our campus several times since then. So he's a good friend of Supremo, and I want the legislature to be there with us tomorrow at eight thirty.
What's your location?
Where do they go? Where? Which floor? Elite four or possible? Elite four.
Elite four. First floor?
Like you are elite.
Next time you talk to Bill, tell him to turn my dial.
Thank you all very much.
This is high top.
Run tall with it. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just, just take a moment to thank Dr. Polo for hosting this, for this. And in this season of Thanksgiving, I also would like to express my appreciation to this board, you know, for your support, your continual support, the input and feedback that you offer to the administration and to the campus. We are better off because of the relationship that we have. So I could just express my appreciation to the board, to our campus leaders, drop acting, and to our staff, wish that you have a wonderful and enjoyable weekend, this weekend. And further, I wanted to just acknowledge Dr. Brown, who go off of this publication point, this is the new South Africa, he gets a little Christopher Noodles, and he's qualitative research, but should be some good read. So.
And it also has a negative in Southern University.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice President Polo. So thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have you got other?
I just, I want, I want to thank all of the board members and all of the issue family, the words of comfort, going through a harsh, tough time for, you know, for myself and for my family, and my mind has been sick for twenty-six years, you know, you've obviously come to it. So I do even want to thank all of you, I would ask chairs for, and I could have a go to, I got more than one, I wish I hoped, but I do want, for the record, to support you as a chair, as a vice chair, if you want, for the record.
Thank you very much. Some time ago, I requested you, Mr. President, I think, to look for a building to name after Dean Preston. So I'm going to ask you to further that, if you will allow that, by the next week, see if we can accept that Dean Preston. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to recognize today, as we speak, the Southern University Naval Reserve Officer Training Corps is running the football from the Minidome to Wards. And they are, they just passed Frederick, so we ran, but I just thought it was really, really great thing. One of my faces involved, like one recognize. When did they start? At the Minidome.
What time did it start?
It started five, six bucks. They'll get it, it's about eight hour run, and they said that Tony was coming, but yeah. We're now to the other businesses and the business force? If not, we say.
We shut it down. Thank you very much.